Here comes Woody.
If we, I'm sorry?
Here comes Woody.
Yay, Woody. Very timely.
The man of the hour.
You see?
Yeah, you take it, Woody.
We're now on a quorum.
All right then. I would like to have a motion to, wait a minute. Do this in order. To my knowledge, there's no change in the agenda as it sits before you. Those are the points we'll be going through. Could I have a motion to accept Art's meeting notes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
There are no minutes to accept.
We have no minutes to accept tonight. We will hope to do that next time. And I know of no correspondence on non-agenda items other than that we do expect the Stanford machine to be before us next month. But the archeology is pretty well cleared up and we hope to see them next month.
Right. And you probably should discuss right now, August 19th.
Yes. How many people will be here August 19th? That's our regularly scheduled meeting in August.
I will be. I'm not planning any.
Okay, I'll be here. Woody, will you be here?
I should be, but I don't mind.
Jesse? Okay, and I know Melody maybe can't.
Probably not.
I realize anyone involved with the fair is going to be...
Sounds like you've got a quorum though.
Yeah, I think we're going to have a quorum. In terms of trying to set a date for the, we have a few minutes before our first public hearing, for the joint meeting with the village, they can't do it on the Tuesdays, the Tuesday the 30th of this month because of their, they're having the public hearing on the event code and the new zoning for the fairgrounds and all that stuff. I think the problem is, we need to announce at one of our meetings when that meeting is going to be. So if at some point...
Yeah, you have to schedule it.
Right, we have to schedule it.
You have to schedule it.
Right. So at some point, if Dave Mill and I can come up with a date and with all of you guys and get a date, at the 19th, we may be able to schedule the public hearing. I don't really see realistically doing it before September, what with the fair and whatnot, things of that. So just to be, you know, make sure we have a quorum and also for the public's going to be involved in other things, things of that sort. So that's sort of how I'm seeing things now, but as time goes on, I'll try to pull that together and get some dates and see if we can get that going. We're back on, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to announce our first public hearing for this evening. Frank Snyder, H. Charles Lane subdivision plat approval, public hearing on application for subdivision plat approval under town code chapter 101 subdivision of land authorize a lot line alteration compensating .057 acre in annexation parcels between lot 12 and lot 13 of filed map 4496. In the rural countryside RC5 district being an unlisted action under SEAKER. And who is doing the presentation on this one?
Yeah.
Marie, yes. Well, I knew that, of course, because we met you out there.
Yes.
Thank you.
We did this a couple years ago. Actually, I have two copies of each of the draft driveway. The draft law consolidation, I have for the planning board, the public hearing notice and the return request.
Excellent. And we already have the pictures of the sign nicely posted in front.
I've printed the pictures of the sign.
So we're good to go.
And for the benefit of the planning board and the public, I'm here representing Frank Snyder. In honor of three parcels of land, actually under three grid numbers, on Charles Lane, which is off of Pramor Hill Road. And we wish Snyder bought the property. He acquired it with a shed and a greenhouse encroaching on the neighbors' property. And at the time, he tried to make an agreement with the neighbors to do a lot line change. There's an existing well on the property. I thought I talked loud enough. This is on? So the issue became whether or not we could get another well where it was approved by the Dutchess County Department of Health, so close to the existing well and be able to put that house in. So at that time, the planning board, as I recall, said that they didn't like the idea. So Mr. Snyder has made agreement with his neighbor, neighbors, John Paul Luci and Maria Gilmore, to do the lot line change now without change of the land where the well is existing. So the existing well will stay on lot 13. The shed and the greenhouse will become part of the land on lot 12. And it will solve the issue of the setback of the construction. The property behind the person will be entirely on lot 12. The lot 13 will have to pick up an equal part of the land because of the fact that it's less than five acres in a five acre zone, so they cannot become more than four acres. And so we propose a small triangle strip of land in front of the property to be changed for the reference right hand of the agreement.
Pizza property around the shed and the greenhouse. Okay. Any questions from members of the planning board?
Nope.
Melody and I did the site visit. I don't know if you'd like to report on that?
I don't think we saw any issues. It's a very simple solution to the problem. I don't think there's really anything more to comment on.
Basically just clears up a couple of encroachments that just, it doesn't alter, doesn't create any new building area or anything like that. So, no, I didn't see any issue with it either. Members of the public, any comment or questions? Okay, planning board, last chance? All righty then. I guess I'm looking to hear, is this an unlisted action?
Unlisted action.
Okay.
Therefore, the resolution is...
We'll cover that. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? All right. Very good. Thank you. And Marie, we have a resolution approval here. And in one minute, we will have our second public hearing.
Or you can dismiss with this resolution.
Oh, we can do the resolution now?
You might as well dismiss with bottom of page three.
Okay.
Take a couple of minutes, but...
Very good. All righty. This is a resolution approving the land swap as well as the incorporated SEAKER termination. Town of Ramiddick Planning Board hereby access follows on the May 20th, 2013, application by Frank Snyder, Marie T. Welch, LS agent for sketch plan review and subdivision plat approval under town code chapter 101 subdivision of land to authorize a lot line alteration compensating .057 acre annexation parcels between lot 12 and lot 13 of filed map 4496. Being in the rural countryside RC5 district, all is depicted on the survey map entitled Amendment to Filed Map Number 4496 Lot Line Alteration Prepared for Frank Snyder by Ms. Welch and dated May 20th, 2013, and otherwise described in a short EAF Part 1 and other supporting information. One determines on review of the short EAF Part 1 certified by Ms. Welch and its own completion of EAF Part 2 in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title 6, Part 617.7C NYCRR, that proposed action as described in the application and being an unlisted action will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, leaving an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating that such will not be prepared, and in doing so directs the chairman to note this determination on the EAF and sign the document. Two approves the Frank Snyder minor subdivision lot line alteration under town code chapter 101 subdivision of land as set forth above and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the planning board's adoption of this resolution. A submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within town code chapter 101, including thereon all required stamps, seals, and certifications. B stamping of the subdivision plat as non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. C submissions for review by the planning board and subsequent recording in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office drafts of consolidation or merger deeds whereby each of the .057 acre annexation parcels will be combined with the lot to which it is being annexed and thus obviate what otherwise would be the creation of a non-complying .057 acre, of two non-complying .057 acre parcels. D payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Ramiddick with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under town code chapter 101, the town's fee schedule and related executed escrow account. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Sharon?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. So, we're, oh, there you are. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving right along to our next public hearing. Ramapo for Children Camp Ramapo off Salisbury Turnpike Wetlands Permit and Site Plan Approval. Continuation from June 3rd, 2013, of public hearing on application for wetlands permit under town code chapter 120 Wetlands and application for site plan approval under town code chapter 125 Zoning Section 125-74 to authorize proposed construction of a 6,240 square foot staff residential building and a 4,375 square foot multi-use building and associated site improvements within the Anchorage area of the 250 acre camp property. In the rural countryside RC5 district has subject a revised site plan dated April 19th, 2013 withdrawing three of six. Proposed site plan further revised to May 14th, 2013 being an unlisted action under SEAKER. Take it away.
Take it away. Working? I don't know if this is on or not, but... Chairman holding?
You have to push, you know, the button first. How about that? Amazing. Pete Sotero, I'm the engineer for the project with Morris Associates. The project is located in the Anchorage section of the camp. This drawing here gives a, I know it's a little hard to see for the planning board, but for any members of the public, if they want to come up and comment afterwards, this shows the Anchorage section here of camp in relation to where some of the neighbors are here. So the project within Anchorage that we're talking about is in this particular area here. The Anchorage section of camp is, you know, approximately here. So the project consists of the construction of a approximately 6,300 square foot full-time residential building. The residential building will replace an existing seasonal building. There's going to be 14 full-time occupants there. It's going to be the same number of beds that is in the current structure, but again, instead of a seasonal building, it's proposed to be a year-round building. Also in the area where the existing basketball court is now, that basketball court is going to be taken out and that will be replaced with approximately a 4,300 square foot multipurpose building. Most of the area here is already cleared. As I said, there's a smaller existing building here, existing basketball court here. We did have our wetlands consultant come out, flagged the wetlands. There's a portion over here and there's also a portion here. The town's wetland consultant has been out there. I don't know if they've issued a written report yet, but we've gotten some verbal comments from him and some emails and it seems like he's relatively happy. With the plan, we did update this plan. There was a small change on each of the wetlands to add an additional flag, so we picked those up. It really didn't have too much of a change. For mitigation, we had proposed some native plantings around the edge of the wetland, around the multipurpose building. We're going to incorporate a couple rain gardens for stormwater runoff. We're proposing that as part of the wetlands permit, that this work will be overseen by our wetlands, by our wetland consultant. And also, we have a note here that we would prepare a final report on the plantings for the planning board's file. We made application last week to the Dutchess County Department of Health because this is going to be a year-round facility. We had to drill a new well. It's been pump tested, been tested for water quality. You know, the quality of water seems fine. So we've made our submission to them. Let's see, what else? That's pretty much it. There's some elevations here. I may turn this over to the project architect, Carlo Mazarelli. Carlo, maybe just want to kind of go over your plans. Here's your elevations, here's, you know, your floor plan. I don't know if you want the floor plan or not, but I'll leave it down here and you have your renderings with you.
How you doing? My name is Carlo Mazarelli from Mazarelli Architecture and Planning. I'll just be very brief. I believe you guys have seen the elevations. I'm not quite sure if the renderings have been passed around. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're trying to do here is, like Pete was saying, make a year-round residential building. A lot of the construction qualities that we're going to implement are going to be up to some green and lead standards. We're also going to incorporate some foam insulation. We're kind of cognizant of the sound problems in the area. So we think that the new construction will mitigate that, keep that sound level, at least inside, much more subdued. The, let me pass this around for you. The, well, Pete talked about the size of the building, 6,000 square feet for the residential building, 4,000 square feet for the multipurpose building. What else can I talk about? Any questions?
Questions for the...
I think the renderings kind of speak for themselves. We're kind of trying to match the architecture of the campus. Some of the outdoor spaces, we kind of located on the site where it's a little bit further away from the residential area also. And as he discussed, the residential building is located currently where Thomas's Hall is.
Okay, what I'd like to do if we could...
Michael, there's a question. There's a question, Michael.
Yeah, I know. I just want to wait until he's finished his presentation, then we'll certainly be happy to take questions. Okay? He's finished his presentation.
I was going to say...
What I've been asked to do is, if you could identify yourself, we're asking people to speak into the microphone because it is being filmed for Panda and apparently he can't pick up what people are saying unless you speak right into the microphone.
On the end of the...
If you could be so kind, yes.
No, no, if you could just...
Thank you. I'm Sandy Kiernan. I'm a new board member on the board of Lake Sebasco. And you had mentioned, we're on the opposite end of the lake from you. And you had mentioned that there was new construction to keep the sound down in the building, but what exactly is that construction?
First of all, by default, the older buildings, of course, are nowhere near the construction quality today, right? You'll have a lot, for example, the interior finishes, probably three eighths in sheet rock. Now we have five eighths in stuff. We have plywood on the inside, thicker wall construction, higher R-values for insulation, whether it's spray foam or batts. So that whole assembly that you build today compared to the one that's 30 years old, it significantly dampens that sound. Window quality, door qualities, the ceiling of all that stuff. Again, this whole envelope is much more sound deadening. Now, when you're outside, that's a different story, but the buildings themselves will be much more sound deadening.
My name is Annie Bund and I live at the end of Old Farm Road and so my land dovetails on the other side of Sebasco Lake, so I'm on the other side. And I have a letter in, my biggest concern is water. And I've had a noticeable drop off on the amount of water I get in my well in the last four or five years, a significant... So I have a couple of questions. When you say a multipurpose building, what exactly do you mean and what is in the building?
Adam, I'll let Adam speak to that.
Hi, I'm Adam Weiss. I'm the CEO of Ramapo for Children. And it's basically a meeting space. So right now, Thomas's Hall, which is being replaced with the residential building, is a convening space during the summer and sometimes during the year. The multipurpose building, which has moved further away, is going to replace that. So it'll be a place where during the summer, counselors can go to play ping pong or hang out when they're time off. During the year, we may have meetings there and use it for that kind of thing, but that's basically what it's designed to be, almost a, basically a meeting space.
So are you saying that you already did drill this well?
Yes.
It's already built. And when was the well drilled?
When?
Yeah.
Two months ago.
I think the well was drilled probably two months ago or so. And it was, there was a 24-hour continuous pump test done on the well. And, you know, the water flow, oh, I don't have it right here, but I believe it was around the peak flow, which we had a run, a continuous flow for, I believe, eight hours and I think it was at 30 something gallons, a minute. So it was, you know, plentiful. And the other thing that I just, I think that's important that we should point out is, we're not adding to the current population of the camp. This is going to basically just be a bigger, you know, facility as far as providing more space in the 14-unit structure. Again, it will be, you know, it will be a year-round facility. And, you know, the multipurpose building is just to add another amenity for that particular section of camp so that, you know, the kids don't have to travel all the way down to the other section of camp, you know, the Ramapo section of camp. But this is not going to, this is not going to add to the, you know, the summertime population there, so...
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about water or not. I guess he was in the middle of a presentation and I don't know if you'd like another time to discuss the issue of water.
These are good questions. These are good questions.
Okay. A number of years ago, you did some more expansion and I didn't really pay attention because I didn't mind if you were expanding. I've enjoyed having the camp there and all that kind of thing and I just never dawned on me that I would, I cannot prove it's because of the use, water use at Ramapo, but my plumber was just shocked a few years ago when I was getting so much silt in my water because he knew, he knows my well because the family of plumbers were on my road and they know my well ever since it was built. It was always gushing with water and suddenly it's not. And another house on our road anecdotal, well, it's not even anecdotal, I have an email about it, has run out of water like 10 times in the last few years. I mean, it's really dramatic shift in the water for where we live. And can't say how it's happening, why. It's just very worrisome to me that the water is, that this is a real suffer, you know, I've called a well company. It would cost me many thousands of dollars to redo my well to suddenly have less water than it was in abundance before. I can't track it, there's no way to prove it, but it's just a concern that I have and that it's becoming a problem on people for possibly, I mean, it certainly is becoming a problem on Old Farm Road. What the cause is, I don't know, but I just wanted to bring it up as a concern because it's a hardship to have to redo our wells.
Thank you. I'm not, I know that the county has never mapped the hydrological characteristics of groundwater, things like that, so we, unfortunately, we don't know really where your water's coming from, where it's going, how it interacts with the neighbors around you, things like that. So unfortunately, there really probably is nothing we can do to try and tell you why you have a problem and how it might be alleviated because we just don't have that information, which I realize isn't real helpful, but unfortunately, it's the way that is right now.
It's because of the building, it's a hardship.
Yeah. No, I certainly understand. Yes?
Carl Paris, Sebasco Lake, 308 Sebasco Lake Road, right across the lake from the camp. I had just a couple of questions. You mentioned the stormwater runoff and where that's going to be directed. Will that be directed in any way towards the wetlands or the stream?
Currently, what we're going to do is, we're going to have a, there's going to be a stone infiltration trench behind where the multipurpose building is. Carlo, if you can just turn the site plan, maybe, where that is. Right now, all, you know, the runoff from this area currently comes down, down along, you know, the main access road here and enters into this wetland and ultimately flows over across the camp access road. So currently, there's just overland flow. So for the multipurpose building, what we're going to do is, we're going to put it into a stone infiltration trench that will let the water seep into the ground. And then, we're also going to incorporate rain gardens over here behind the new bunkhouse building that will take, you know, the roof leaders from this building and we're going to put them into, you know, rain gardens here. So we should be, you know, reducing the amount of water coming off the site in this, in just this particular project area.
I have a few more questions, but, you know, I am expressing concern because some years ago, the camp built a new swimming pool and there is a pipe from the stormwater runoff into the lake. And we saw immediate impact to the visibility of the water in the lake when that happened. So that's why I'm concerned.
We're waiting for two more reports from our engineering consultant, which are reviewing the stormwater pollution prevention plan, as well as from our wetland person who's reviewing their mitigation plan for the wetland. So to see whether or not indeed these issues will be properly resolved. And we're still waiting for those reports from our people.
So another area of concern is the construction process itself. And maybe this is more a question for the planning board than for the engineers, but in years past, when previous buildings were built, there was, I would say, a half-hearted attempt to build silt fences that were immediately damaged and ineffective and there appeared to be little no oversight. And we also had runoff into the lake as a result of that.
We will be doing our very best to ensure, it's our responsibility and the zoning enforcement office's responsibility to make sure that not only are all the approved erosion and sediment controls in place, but they are maintained throughout construction and they actually function properly. So yes, that is a responsibility that does bear on the town and it is one that we will do our very best to make sure we meet.
And the third question, because I've learned that sometimes the architectural depictions can be a little misleading. I haven't had a chance to look at the drawings. Could you just state how high the side walls of each of these buildings are and how high the highest point of the peak of each of the buildings are in feet?
21 feet to the peak.
Highest, okay.
Highest peak, okay. Then the other...
That's about 19.
I saw it. Someone like...
Yeah. And the sidewalls, not the end buildings, but on the side of the building, essentially?
Nine feet.
Nine feet?
Nine feet and 10 feet. Nine feet residential, 10 feet more.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Any more questions at this moment before we continue on? Okay, what I'd like to do is ask the two planning board members who did the site visit to report. And I have no idea who did it. Oh.
Bob and I did it. A while ago. We did go out, we walked the site. I think with the mitigation that they do for the wetlands, I think we find the buildings that they're replacing, these are much nicer looking, so I think it's an... makes sense to put it where it is because there's a current building there, and with the basketball court there, you know, it, it just seems like that's the most logical place to put it. And the current building that's there is, is actually fairly rundown, so.
CAB report?
Yes, hi, Jeff Romano from the Conservation Advisory Board. We went on the site visit with the planning board. We have a few comments. The site is within a conservation zone that's having the potential for the existence of the Blanding's Turtle. The habitat assessment should indicate this fact and address any mitigating factors. The proposed wetlands mitigation does not equal, which is typically the standard used, two times the disturbance. As we discussed, the site is constrained by steep slopes, making it difficult to move the proposed buildings out of the buffer and/or installing the two times mitigation standard. We recommend that the proposed building in the buffer be raised up off the ground similar to some of the camp's existing buildings to allow for what would be a more natural runoff to occur feeding the wetlands and protecting the buffer. As the proposed facility and the existing facilities are all use an existing septic field which is in a wetland buffer, we recommend that the camp work toward eliminating all cleaning materials, personal laundry and building which have a toxic effect on the environment. The CAB will, if the camp would like, work with the facilities manager and assist in developing a green program. As is set forth in the Town of Rhinebeck Wetland Law, we ask that a description of the potential impacts to wetland hydro period be quantified. And we thank the camp for participating in this. Thank you.
And as I also mentioned earlier, we're waiting for the report from our engineer, and we're also waiting for the report from our wetland specialist who I know has been out to the site and has taken a look at everything. So those are two things we're still waiting on at this point. So we will be continuing this public hearing, but we would be happy to entertain more questions this evening. Yes?
Hi. I'm afraid you have to come up and speak at the microphone.
Microphone, please.
That way you will be recorded for posterity on Tanda. I, I just wondered if this question was already asked about a fence between Ann Drive and the camp by the road because there, I don't know about people who live there, but there was a question about the noise from the camp counselors, and there'd be more people there now.
Hi, Scott Kemp, Director of Operations. So we actually had someone come out to look at a fence, and the way to put it, it's going to, it'd be too low. So we had talked about, in our last semester, about possibly putting a new shrubbery because the fence where you could put it, we can't put it right on our road because of the snow, and they would just tear it up. So we talked about, you know, if we put it down behind our electrical lines, it probably would just end up going, it wouldn't do anything, it wouldn't help at all. So we were thinking that we would offer to put in evergreens or some type of shrubbery along, you know, their back of their property to help, to help do that, to help, again, mitigate some of the, the factors that they talked about.
And if I could just add one thing, when we chose to, to do the buildings, the building that I think generates the most noise for folks on Ann Drive is that Thomas's Hall building. And functionally, that will be moved further away, and when Carlo designed it, there's a little bit of, there's like an open porch which is on the backside of the building, specifically so that we'll, we can reduce the noise that, that comes over Ann Drive. So I think that actually will, will also help a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to comment about.
Wait, whoa, whoa, gotta get the microphone.
Sorry. Just wanted to comment about the fences. Fences, because it's a conservation zone for the Blanding's Turtle, is probably not a good idea. Any kind of shielding should be done with vegetation.
Are there questions? Yes. Actually, if you could hand, have that, hand her the microphone. This is working very well.
Thank you. I'm just a little confused about the wells. So the well for this particular addition was already built, so it's, that's not ever a issue that has to become in front of the planning board, so they can drill as many wells as they want and?
Well, it's more up to the health department to determine whether or not, where they can put it, and if they approve it, and if it's then drilled, whether or not they feel it's, you know, sanitary and can be used. But yes, you can do that prior to planning board approval.
So it doesn't, in terms of, then, the neighbors and their water, it's not about a sanitation issue, it's just about, there's nothing, there's no board or something to go in front of about?
My knowledge, I don't, I'm not aware of anything like that.
If the proposal involved an increase in the population, the day-to-day population of the camp, and consequently involved an increase in, substantial increase in water use by the camp, then that would be an environmental issue that would be explorable by the planning board as part of this particular process. I think as explained by the, by the applicant or by the applicant's engineer, this proposal does not involve an increase in the day-to-day population of the camp during its peak summer period. Consequently, the water use is going to remain as it has been in the past.
Yeah, I understood that.
It's apparently going to be drawn now from, from different wells, from two wells instead of a single well. But as Michael pointed out, as the chair pointed out, the, the placement of the well, the right or the permission to drill the well, the requirements for inspection of the well, all reside with the county health department. The well is shown as an element on the site plan that's approved by the planning board, but it's only shown as an element on the site plan, but not really approved as to, as to location or any other factor by the, by the planning board, but by the health department.
Yeah, I understood that there are no, no people.
If they dig a well right over the top of your underground stream that's feeding your well, there's nothing we can do.
I, no, I understand that, I just didn't understand why they built a new well, why they dug a new well for, that was.
They're a year-round building.
Yeah.
The current, the current water system up in Anchorage is only a, like, a seasonal, seasonal water system. The water lines are, if they're buried six to eight inches below the ground, they couldn't be used in, you know, the wintertime because they'd be subject to freezing. So, you know, the well that services the summer season there is closed down in October, maybe, Scott, somewheres, somewheres around there. So now, this, this new well that, you know, we recently drilled, which we had to get the location of that well, had to be, had to be approved by the county health department before we went out and drilled the well and tested it. So we have to go through, through the county health department, you know, on all that stuff. But the well that was drilled now, we're going to be burying the water lines from that well to, to the two brand-new buildings so that they're below frost, we don't have to worry about it. And then that, so that, that well will serve those two buildings both in the summertime and winter, so.
Other questions tonight? Yes.
My name is Debbie Mimoso. I live on Ann Drive, and my backyard basically abuts the camp and is only about several hundred feet from where they're planning the buildings. I don't have questions, I have concerns. I've lived there for over 12 years. When we first moved there, we knew there was a camp back there, and there was an access road. We knew there would be summertime noise, et cetera. We chose to purchase that property anyway. Since that time, it has gone from a summertime camp to a year-round camp. There is noise all the time. Weekends during the summer, every night and weekends can be loud at times. And as I said, my home is only a few hundred feet from the, the current basketball court and building, and there are many nights where the noise is very loud. There is pounding of drums, and there is chanting. And we had a discussion with some of the camp people last time we were here, and he chose to patronize that I was talking about the chanting, but when you listen to chanting all night long at a, at a very loud decibel, it's not something to just push under the rug. Since we met with them, they said that they wanted to be good neighbors, that they wanted to work with us if they want, if we wanted to meet with them and express our concerns. Since that time, when they knew we had concerns about the noise, I have had to call Scott twice, which I didn't think was unreasonable, seeing it was after 10 o'clock at night, and the noise was still emanating from the area. One of them was a school night, and I have children that were in school, and at 10:30 at night, I think it's unreasonable to have singing and chanting and things like that. Some of my other concerns, as I said, when we moved there over 12 years ago, there wasn't any water in my backyard. I don't know what they've done in the meantime, but now my backyard has water at all times. There is not a time when the water dries up, sometimes worse than others. Again, I'm not sure what they've done, changing road surface or diverting things or whatever. Maybe it doesn't have anything to do with them, maybe it does. I'm concerned that with them putting up more buildings and, you know, the, the water runoff may be affected again, and I may have more water in my backyard. And it is water all the time.
Hopefully, as I said, we're waiting for the report from our engineers on the stormwater pollution prevention plan. And ideally, nothing should be leaving the property that didn't leave the property before there was development. So we are waiting to hear from him, and I'm trying to find the noise ordinance in the zoning law.
Okay. And, and, don't ask me, you know, decibel levels, whatever. Noise is noise, you know, sometimes it's loud, sometimes it's not so loud.
Well, I do believe.
I can, I can put up with it when it's not so loud, or during the day. I, you know, all day yesterday, being a Sunday, there was singing and noise and, you know, go team go and all that kind of stuff all day long. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with it at night.
Is there, is there some kind of a, a rule at the camp? I mean, most camps have lights-out times and quiet times at a certain time.
7:00 AM to 8:00.
You in for?
The license say yes, and?
It's a matter of enforcing it.
Well, I disagree with, I don't think some of the things that Debbie's saying are factual.
That's fine, but just my question is.
Absolutely. In fact, bear, bear in mind that we are serving children special needs. They actually go to bed early. Sometimes the council will gather in the evening. As I've said, it's a part of the.
This relates to mechanical devices, mechanical. Speaker's system.
They, the building initiative gather, removing it personally from the property so that the noise will be mitigated. So if anything, this building will certainly make it better.
So the quiet times are?
What about this?
9:30?
Rising from a commercial property to a public space at R-50, commencing at 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
We have staff who don't have kids, and we have Debbie, I would say, who's been on the, and we have 200 college-age staff who are training at 9:00, or finishing with training or whatever, and they have, and they have a place to gather. And normally, without kids, everyone is in their own.
Oh, oh, I was just told by, by the, by the clerk that you have to use the microphone because no one can hear you. And I did find, we do have noise regulations, and basically, they refer to decibel levels between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM, not to go above it as a residential property line. It's something that the zoning enforcement officer is authorized to come out and do tests to see whether or not he's ready to do that yet, I'm not sure, but that's, we do have these decibel levels for different uses at different times.
And as I was saying, just, the one week is that training week when we have the 200 staff, and I would say that for Debbie gave me a call twice during that week where we had, and we tried to do a few things like mitigating that, like we had half of them do overnights, and we've moved like some events down into the gym. So we're trying to spread people out, but it's that one week where we have 200 staff that we don't want to just send into town. We're looking to have and, you know, keep, because when you have 200 college-age staff, we're not looking to just, they need something to do, they're not going to go to bed at 8:00 or 8:30 at night. So, and Thomas's Hall's always been the gathering place, and so, you know, Debbie called me twice, and definitely, you know, we were pushing them, but we definitely have had some mistakes with that, and so, so, but that's the one week I know specifically that I would say is difficult. Otherwise, when the kids are here, everyone is with the kids, and then it's definitely a different, a different scenario.
And, and just to correct the record, you know, you say I'm factually wrong, it wasn't, it was over the course of more than one week. I only called you two weeks ago, and that wasn't the first week. Anyway, the other things I'm concerned about, you know, we, we questioned the placement of the buildings. They have, you know, so many acres, and their response was that that was the best place for it. But, and, and in order, you know, some of their land rises up in a cliff and, you know, they can't do anything there. But I would hazard to say, they have a, almost a mile between where the buildings are now and the entrance on the road, and, you know, that's not a cliff, it's on a road. As far as the noise being better because it will be behind the building, it's my understanding that now the basketball court is behind the building, and the noise is still coming there. I don't know if there's a natural amphitheater effect or something like that. Some of my other concerns, again, to bring up the fence, I understand the ecological points that, you know, we shouldn't have a fence, and it's too close to the road because of there's snow removal. The reasons we wanted a fence were outlined to them three years ago. Three years ago, they promised they would do something about it, and at that point talked about a fence. Because the problems that necessitated me asking for a fence and my two neighbors to either side who couldn't be here tonight were things like counselors coming into our yards, approaching me and asking me for a job, cutting through the yards, thinking they could find a quicker way to the street. They're cutting right through our property. Again, you know, the audacity to walk up to me and say, "I want a job." And I said, "Well, don't you work at the camp, and don't you already have a job?" And, "Well, we get one day off, and I'd like to work. Can I watch your children or clean your house?" These were the things that, that we deal with. I deal with, because our property is close to the road, I deal with things like counselors making comments. I have teenage children, and they've been outside and had lewd comments made at them as they're sitting by our pool. I've had, heard comments like, "Ooh, look at the nice pool." We'll wait till they go to bed and come back and go in it. These are the things that prompted me to ask for some remediation, maybe in the form of a fence. So I'm not sure that shrubbery will prevent that. But I do understand that, you know, a fence may not be something. But to the bottom line is that they did promise us that three years ago and never came through on that. And again, I'll just point out that they said they do want to be good neighbors, and I asked, you know, "Have you reached out to us?" And the answer to that would be no. So I don't call that a good neighbor. So I, I am concerned. I'm concerned about the water, I'm concerned about continued noise. And then the one other thing that I wanted to just bring up is that, you know, they're wanting to build a new building as a, an all-purpose type of a building. They just built an all-purpose type of a building in the form of a gym, many thousands of square feet down by the water. I would question what the necessity is for another all-purpose building. It seems to me that things are traveling quicker than the speed of light as far as them expanding. You know, first it's from summer to year-round, now we're building buildings all over the place. I'm concerned that it's going to become bigger and bigger, and then our problems may really begin. So those are my concerns. Thank you for listening.
Might, might possibly be helpful, prior to the next public hearing, maybe you can sit down with some of the neighbors and discuss some of these points? Yes?
Just for the record, I just want to clarify, we agree, we did host an event to which Debbie was invited, a lot of folks in this room were there, Carl was there, where we brought everyone to campus, we gave them the tour, we showed them what we were planning. And since then, we have called Debbie specifically and invited her to come, and she has not returned those calls. Maybe you didn't get those messages, but I just want to go on record as saying we have been making best efforts. There is clearly, you do not like us as a neighbor. I would venture to say the feeling is probably mutual, but we have been doing the best we can.
A quick question while you're there. Is there, I mean, we have an obligation to look at the overall picture, the future of your project, and I can imagine you've got something laid out for the next five years, 10 years. You've got projected numbers, clients, counselors. Is there going to be another building three or four years from now?
We have no plans to build an additional building. We also have no plans to expand the capacity of the camp in terms of the number of people we serve. we serve. Thomas's Hall, which is the, the building on which the residence is going, is really, as these folks can confirm, very old, dilapidated and needs to be taken down. And the other building is going to help us enhance our program because right now, folks that are in the Anchorage end of camp, to really use a bathroom or to have a clean space to gather have to walk all the way down to the other end of camps. This is a program enhancement, but we have no real plans to expand capacity.
Other questions this evening? Yes?
Hi, I'm Sue Carlson. I live at Sopasko Village. And like Debbie, I have a concern about the year-long program and how it seems that more adults are working there. We keep talking about the program in the summer being the same and serving the same amount of people, but we see more and more people there throughout the year and it is so loud sometimes at night in the wintertime and, you know, because the lack of leaves, obviously, it's brighter. And there's so much going screaming and yelling going on at night, it's so loud and not always music, but the, a lot of the people that live in this little development, and I've lived there for 25 years and I've seen a big change from a little, beautiful, quiet camp where it seemed like they were dedicated to nature and bringing these kids from the city and, and making it a special summer event to just almost like bringing the city to the country. And unfortunately, the people that live in that development, year after year after year, don't have any recourse really because after every event, like if something happens at night, there's nobody to contact to say, "These people sound like they're in my front yard." And when there are elderly people or young children who need to go to bed early or get up early for an elderly person possibly, it is, that, that noise starts at 8 o'clock in the morning. And I'm not talking about children. I work with children. Many of the people in my development are parents and many teachers, many educators and, and that's one of the things that we've always been criticized for is that we don't like children and that's totally, you know, over the top and over the top, over the top statement. It's not the kids that we're hearing, we're hearing the adults. And it's so loud. And our concern is that this building, it may be servicing the same amount of people, but now we're talking all year. And I guess my question is, other than my big concern along with everybody else's, is does this mean that these 14 people or whoever are going to be there are to make more programs throughout the year? Because I thought it was a not-for-profit and I see signs of saying, "Come to the camp." You know, they're around town, you know, there's programs that they can just come to throughout the year. And our concern is that this is getting bigger and bigger and bigger and that anybody can go there, it's not needy children, it's just anybody and that this impacts my, well, my home, my life, not just the summer, but all year now. And also, I feel my property value. So, the question is, is this building going to make it possible for more year-round programs? Is that what it's for? And is that, is that what the people that will be there, is that what it's for?
Debbie, you have to say that to the microphone, to the public at large.
The answer to your question is no. You know, to be clear, we, we are a charitable organization. We have existed for 92 years. We serve the most vulnerable children, children who are doubly challenged by special needs and poverty. On the weekends, we have taken to inviting families from the community to come take advantage of our Rockwall if they'd like to. You're welcome, all folks are welcome. We're trying to build those relationships. But to be clear, these buildings are enhancements in any facilities, a 90-year-old facility, there have to be upgrades and there have to be improvements for any organization like ours to be sustainable. These do that for us, but these are not expanding our capacity or our program scale in any way. We're not adding more people, this is just an enhancement for our, for our facility.
Do you have a list of events right now, your agenda for the year, that you can provide with this so that we can see the typical usage, so that we can see a year from now that it hasn't grown?
I want to be, let me clarify what our year-round usage is. So, we have a, a summer camp and just so folks know, 20 years ago, when I started doing this kind of work and when Mike was already doing it for about 20 years, not-for-profit summer camps were sort of a viable not-for-profit endeavor. You could sustain summer camps. Summer camps are not sustainable on their own without other kinds of programming. So, we do serve school groups during the year. Many groups come to us for training, to be, to enjoy our facility. Again, these are schools, 90% of them. We will have an occasional church group. We also have, we have a group of people that live on campus year-round to support their programming, some of whom are young adults with disabilities. And these buildings will provide them with better housing, nicer housing, but again, this is not expanding our capacity in any way. And you are all welcome to come at any time. You know, we have school groups there often and, and if you call us with a few days' notice, we can tell you who's there and, and anyone can come by and, and see what we're doing.
Oh, I want to say thank you and, and just to let you know that we still do have concerns about some of the noise and other things that are going on, not just the water too. Thank you.
Yeah. Other que, yes?
One more question and it's, again, Carl Parrish from Sopasko Village and it's for the planning board. There are a lot of lights on the exterior parts of the building at the camp. Are those, placement of those lights, in some cases on every corner, every so many feet on the side of the buildings in the peak and so forth, are they dictated by the planning board?
They, we do have lighting plans now and lighting regulations for all new structures, new construction, things of that sort.
Even for rural summer camps?
Yeah.
And that's any different, is that any different than a Walmart parking lot or than, or the Rhinebeck High School?
Well, in a Walmart parking lot, for example, you're trying to light the parking area for safety, for things of that sort. It would certainly be different in a setting such as this because you don't have, you know, 100, 200 cars, 300 cars coming in and out, things of that sort. So, yes, there are specific standards for specific uses.
What's our height, 15?
I think it is. And I, part of the thing that will be coming for us-
They can't put up a big, you know, floodlight.
But the other thing that will be coming before is a lighting plan for the new construction, the new area.
Because if the sum total of all the buildings, the aggregate total of lights over there is quite substantial for, on throughout the night in many cases where there's, you know, over vacations and weekends in the wintertime when almost nobody, if anybody's there, and maybe there's a small staff there. And I would just, I'm just wondering if, if it's really necessary, and, and when I talked to the camp and I asked, they said, you know, that, that's kind of mandated, but I'm really questioning, again, the planning board here in terms of, can you take a look at, do you need that many lights?
Uh-huh.
Is it, are you, is it a too little interpretation of a rule that-
The gym was supposed to have light dampers that came down on the side windows so that
at night it didn't look like a big lit-up auditorium. Do they use those?
They don't.
Pardon?
They don't go up the shades, they don't go up the shades on the side.
They just stay there all the time?
Carl, Art just raised a good point. The planning board does not mandate lighting. The applicant applies because they want lighting for certain reasons, specific uses, things of that sort. The planning board then will go over their lighting plan to ensure it meets our lighting regulations in terms of light trespass, things like that, because we do have a new lighting-
So, we could conceivably work with the camp to reduce the volume of lights and then review that with the planning board to see if that's acceptable?
I would think that would be something that could be done, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In the na, in the nature of trying to be good neighbors with one another.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Other questions this evening? Anyone on the planning board have anything else for this evening?
Do we have a correspondence that has not been read into the record relative to this? I believe there's one out there.
A couple of letters, come, thank you.
If we do, I do not have them in front of my-
Hold on, hold on, I've got, I believe I've got a couple of letters.
Well, there's one from a Mr. O'Brien, concerned with the same. He lives on Ann Drive. And John is a longstanding citizen of this community and a well-respected one and his notice-
His letter's here.
Has a concern. I'd like to make sure that they're read into the public.
Yeah, I don't know if these are the only two, these are the two that I have copies of.
Because he was here last month and he said he would not be here this month.
Right, okay. Well, I guess I have some-
See if Joan has any other letters. Joan, are there any other letters other than Bond and O'Brien? Check the file, please.
And in the interim, I will do some reading. Okay. This is from John Elizabeth O'Brien. Mr. Trimbley, members of the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. We are writing in response to the notification of the public hearing on the applications by Ramapo for Children in the matter of proposed staff residential building, multi-use building and associated site improvements on the property of Ramapo for Children, including an application for a wetlands permit. We live at 11 Ann Drive in Rhinebeck and the area of the proposed project is situated directly behind our house. We purchased our property in 2000 and built our house in 2001. One of the reasons we chose this particular location in Rhinebeck was the privacy and tranquility it offered. At the time, the camp activity and traffic at Ramapo were seasonal, limited and tolerable. Over the past 12 years, this has changed dramatically. Traffic has increased, traffic has increasingly become an issue. Charter buses, delivery vehicles, construction equipment and automobiles now travel Camperamapo Road all day and night throughout the entire year. There has been an increase in both foot traffic and maintenance vehicles since the addition of the residential housing area at the south end of Camperamapo Road. People walking the roadway can be heard clearly from our house and backyard. On numerous occasions, inappropriate and offensive language and conversations have been heard by members of our family, including our three children. Our neighbor once even had several members of the camp staff enter her fence yard to solicit employment. Noise from the camp activities has increased greatly over the years. Screaming, yelling, drumming and loud music can often be heard all day long and into the night. The expansion of camp facilities away from the lake and up the camp road has resulted in increased noise and activity experienced by all of the families living at the east end of our neighborhood. We object specifically to the location of the proposed construction of the staff residential building and multi-use recreational building as it will only increase the existing problems with noise and activity directly behind our residence. Surely, with 250 acres of camp property, this project could be relocated elsewhere in the camp to an area with less impact on surrounding neighbors. We have additional concerns relating to the wetlands permit requested by Ramapo for Children for the proposed building projects. Past site improvement projects at the camp have already altered the natural drainage pattern of the wetland area behind our property and resulted in the drainage of water into our yard. We had to have excavation work done in order to properly drain this excess water away from our house. We are greatly concerned that any more work in the specific area will only exacerbate the existing water issues. We support Ramapo for Children and their work. They provide wonderful experiences for children who face challenges in everyday life. It is our hope that they will work to address our concerns in the same positive way and relocate these building projects to a more suitable location for their extensive camps. Thank you for hearing our concerns, John and Elizabeth O'Brien. And I have one from Annie Bond. Jermaine Swinney, when we bought our house, which abuts the Ramapo land in 1992, we were told that we had an abundant supply of well water and that the well flourished. About three years ago, I had to have the plumber come over because I had a lot of silt in the water and the washing machine was clogging up, et cetera. The plumber, Andrew Brinkman, who grew up on my road and has been involved with my well for most of his life, said when he came that he has absolutely, that he was absolutely astonished because the well was very low and he'd never seen it that way. Since this time, I have had very bad silt in my water every summer. Andrew tells me that his mother, who lives on my road, has completely lost water multiple times in the past, in the last four years and their water quality has changed so much that they have had to get a filter. All of this is a very worry, is very worrisome and I worry that Ramapo's water demands are pulling too much water out of the aquifer and having a very negative effect on my well and the wells of my neighbors. How do they fill their swimming pools? How will they, how will even more demand affect my well? While there appears to be no way to prove that the water problem I'm having is coming from Ramapo's water usage, there is good reason to suspect it could be. Drilling deeper is a very expensive proposition for me and one that would cause hardship. And that's from Annie Bond. And, Joni's not back yet, so I don't know if there's anything in addition. Do we have more questions? Yes?
Given some of the comments about traffic, is there a need for a traffic study, report from DOT or anything of that nature?
I wouldn't, I think the only thinking about that would be if this is going to be any increase in traffic because of this, there may have been a need for a traffic study done earlier for earlier work, things of that sort, if that wasn't done. But since it's being proposed that there'll be no additional use, additional people, I'm assuming additional construction, maintenance, things of that sort coming to the site, I don't know that that would be right for this particular. It may have been something that should have been done in the past when further things were expanded, when the program was expanded.
That's a county road or state?
County.
I think it's county.
County.
I believe it's county. Anything else at the moment? Yes?
As, as far as your two consultants, are we able to contact them?
Certainly.
Directly, because I'd like to, I'd like to start working with the engineer and I know we've been in contact with Norbert because I know the camp, you know, the goal is to, you know, resolve any of the issues here, like obviously, work with, you know, the planning board and, and their consultants. But there is a timeframe that, you know, we're up against. So, we'd like to try to coordinate with these, with these consultants, hopefully maybe answers, answer some questions, you know, that could possibly help, you know, the process.
That's the policy that we have followed, allow, having that done because it does speed things up, as long as you realize that any conversation, whatever you have with them, comes out of your escrow.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course, I understand that. We're on the other end it many times too, so we understand that.
I know you are, so, yeah, that, if that can help to alleviate issues, to come to solutions more quickly, then that's, I think, to everyone's benefit. Of course, everything has to then come before the planning board and then we will-
Yeah, well, absolutely, you know, the planning board has, you know, the final-
Whether or not it does indeed meet the needs of the community, I think we've heard a number of things mentioned tonight-
Yep.
-that may be a good grist for the mill when you do discuss this with the engineer.
Yes, yes. And, you know, the drainage issue, whoever mentioned, I'm sorry, whoever mentioned the, you know, the drainage issue back there, you know, we will, we will go out and I can look at that because, you know, we are certainly interested in that and, you know, we'll bring that up to, you know, your consultant also.
It was just those two letters that we have at the present time.
When are you hoping to use the building?
Adam? I, I know that, I think the goal is to hopefully start construction in the fall, to get, you know, the footings and the foundations in.
You would hope to start next summer?
Next summer.
The challenge being you can't have construction bump into, you need to be done-
Before the kids come back.
Before the summer, yeah.
So, thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Okay, what I'd like to do, if any planning board members have questions right now, is ask for a motion to continue the public hearing until August 19th, I believe at 6:35. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'm concerned frankly about this noise discussion that I'm hearing, okay? It's an adversarial approach from either side. I would like to see the camp and the neighbors get together and come up with a combined solution that satisfies both of them and come to the board and tell us what it is. Because these people are genuine citizens, they pay their taxes and they don't need to be listening to some bunch of college-age students doing whatever they do after 9 o'clock or whenever at night it is. And I really think you as a management team owe that to the community. And I'd like to see you get involved with them and do it.
I think beyond that, Woody, whether or not you strictly fall within the limits imposed by the town noise regulations, it's clearly the intent of the town through the noise regulations to limit the interference, noise interference from one property to another after 8:00 PM in the evening, from 8:00 PM in the evening until 7:00 the next morning. So, I think there should be, as Woody said, a good faith effort made on behalf of, but made by the management team to see what can be done to limit noise levels emanating from that camp to the extent that they disturb the neighbors after 8:00 PM in the evening. Beyond that, I'd like to, I think I'd like to see, as a town planning consultant, I'd like to see a favorable report made to the board at the August 19th meeting of the fact that that discussion has begun and has be, has reached some sort of a, has gone in some sort of a positive direction. and has reached some sort of a, has gone in some sort of a positive direction. Otherwise, I think there are some potential significant adverse environmental issues being raised about this project that could lead to a call for a positive declaration and an environmental impact statement. And I don't think anyone wants to go there.
Preferably not.
If the issues can be resolved without getting involved in that sort of a process that would totally frustrate your intended construction schedule.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. As I said, I think clearly, if you all live out there together, you really do need to get together and work these things out. I mean, Ramapo does wonderful work for children. I think everyone who has concerns here has also expressed that. They certainly support the camp and the camp's purpose and the camp's function. But they have to live there too, and they're also residents of the community. So you guys really need to put your heads together and come up for a resolution for this. Because you're all going to be there for quite a while to come, I'm sure. And it is something that, if, to the extent that we possibly plan the planning board, we would like to see this resolved. We don't like to see it just exacerbated, become more of a problem as you go down the road. Thank you all for coming tonight. This public hearing will be continued on the 19th, which is shortly before the fair, at 6:35. Moving right along.
Core group.
Okay.
Another fun one.
What we'll do is let everyone sort of, if everyone could sort of buzz on out. Who has to leave now, so we have two other things on the agenda this evening.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have to move people, but the guy should.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Me and the director right now.
Yeah.
Not a standing.
No, no. Yeah, they are.
You gave me the opening to get that straight. It's true.
Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to move right along. Our next item of business, Core Group Properties LLC, Middle Road, Special Use Permit and Site Plan Approval. "On consideration of the town board's amendment on May 13th, 2015, as the district's schedule of use regulations and zoning map, conduct a sketch plan conference concerning a now permissible special event venue on tax map parcel number given, as now classified within the Office Research Park District. Presentation of applications for special use permit pursuant to Town Code Chapter 125, Zoning Section 12520 and 12568 EEE, and Site Plan Approval and Related Planning Board Processing, as may be timely under Town Zoning Law and Seeker." Alrighty, who's presenting?
And are the, are the applications for special permit and site plan being submitted at this time? Because if not, this is only a sketch plan conference. Those applications are not.
Okay.
Okay. So you can ignore the procedural.
Yes. Yeah, I think so.
And an engineer second.
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and public. My name is Dan Wheeler, DF Wheeler Engineers Redhook. I'm here to talk about the greenhouse at Rhinebeck Sketch Plan. And I, I, I am relatively new to this project in that I wasn't here for the zoning revisions. And so if I make a few mistakes, please excuse me, and we'll push on. We also have Mr. Rizzo here, so I'm sure he'll be able to fill you in with the operational parameters. I'm here more for the water flows downhill and you can't push a rope kind of stuff, okay, the engineering stuff. We talked, this was a, about approximately 7.5 acres. It was rezoned, it's also on Middle Road. The barn has been revised as a flower shop, and we're looking to increase that to a temporary venue for weekend, am I doing good? Weekend weddings and those types of things. I think that the chairman and Mr. Broad went out and took a look at the site, and I think that, and actually it was Marie Welch, the surveyor, who was presenting the last time on this. And so the, we took, we took and we, and Marie is still involved in the project, I don't want you to think. And, but one of the issues was overflow parking, and we took a look at the areas. These are basically the fields where the greenhouse is used, this is the enemy farm, I'm sorry, the enemy farm. I always say that wrong. Yeah, thank you. I always say that. It's like aluminum, yeah, it's like aluminum for some people or something like that. So I spent 26 years in the Army, so everybody is the enemy, okay? So anyway, overflow parking, this is the middle road right here, north comes up like that. This is a site that has several existing houses, full-time residents on it. And so we're looking to add to, possibly putting some tentage in here during inclement weather, but basically looking at around 75, if I'm not, if I'm correct, 75 people additional. I think the two big issues were the additional parking and perhaps the sewage, well, maybe there were three. Sewage and water, okay? And sewage, we would like to put forth a concept of the porta potties, the temporary storage, the temporary facilities. These serve a really, really, it seems like it's an idea that's right for this in that it's extremely temporary. You get them the, basically the day before. You, you go get them, they're self-contained, and then they're hauled away. So there is no interference with any type of the environment. We don't have to worry about water table. We don't have to worry about exposure to the neighbors or any wells or anything like that. We would look at screening them and from the, from the road. And it's a system, I mean, if you take a look at the event, the event comes like this, and then all of a sudden there's a spike in the usage, and then it flattens out for a week. And then there's a spike in the usage and it flattens out for a week. That's not a system that's really conducive to a sanitary system. Sanitary systems look for like a steady flow all the time, okay? And so this, so these temporary structures have a huge problem because their, their usual flow is really low. And then when the weekend hits or the event hits, it pops up, okay? This is very nicely handled by the porta potties. They're, I mean, they're just taken away, it's pumped away. It's a, it's a problem that's really not a problem. So that's what we propose for that. For the water, traditionally, the, the concept of a public water supply is five or more systems or taps on a well, okay? This has precisely five, okay? We have, am I doing this right, four houses and the barn, okay? Now, the barn has water and it has one bathroom in it, okay? So for the flower shop, no problems, okay? And so the, the concept of a public water supply, yeah, I mean, we, we could, if the board sees it that way, we could, we could go do that, okay, as a public water supply. That would mean pump testing, that would mean testing the water for E. coli and total coliform. But I offer for your consideration that this thing has been around for about 40 years with the various houses and not one drop of problems, okay? We don't have, we don't have any problems with the health department with respect to pathogens. We don't have any problems with the health department with respect to drawdown. We just don't have any problems, okay? And there is an old farmer saying that you can't fix what ain't broke, okay? So I understand that technically we could go and meet the commitment for a public water supply system, but recognize that four of these are permanent, okay? And the fifth one tends to, again, be the spike, okay? Just like the sewage, okay, the water spikes up and goes away, okay? Okay, so that's my little song and dance. Now I assume everybody's got questions.
Which I'll just make two comments.
Okay, do you want to?
I have one right here.
Okay.
My very own. It's a public water system because the public is coming to this facility to dine, to eat.
Right, right.
Therefore, it is a public water system and has to be, period.
Okay.
Has to be. Secondly, the permit that's being, that is going to be applied for is not for a temporary structure. Is not for a temporary use. It is for a permanent event center, okay? It's not temporary, it's permanent. How often it gets used is basically up to whatever the booking is, that sort of thing.
Okay.
I know that we have gone over this discussion repeatedly in many different venues. There have to be permanent lavatory facilities for people to use the facilities.
Oh, this venue.
At this venue.
Oh, at this venue.
Porta potties are not going to be acceptable for anything that this board gives a permanent special permit to. If you were going to go get a temporary permit for every event you want to hold there, and I don't believe you can do that unless it's a private family event without any commercial overtones. Then maybe you could get away with a porta potty for the family wedding. But for a public facility, a commercial facility, you need a public water system, and you need a permanent lavatory facility, wash facility for this thing, for the planning board to be willing to give the special permit for this use.
Okay, traditionally, the planning board delegates that to the Department of Health with respect to.
No, 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 no.
Michael, I can help you.
Thank you.
Dan, you weren't, you weren't part of the prior discussion onsite that involved Mr. Rizzo, Dan Schuster, Michael and myself. And to be perfectly frank, we'll, I'll just tick off the five requirements that were listed then. And there's nothing in the recurrent submission that would cause those to change. One, there need to be applications submitted for special use permit.
Right.
And site plan approval.
Right.
In accordance with the requirements of the town zoning law.
Right. I think we.
There needs to be a site plan submitted that is not prepared by a landscape architect, but under the educational laws of the state of New York, is stamped by a professional engineer.
Okay.
Felt that's why you were being brought on board. There needs to be adequate parking demonstrated. There needs to be adequate water supply demonstrated, both physically as well as in a legal sense, as Michael has just pointed out, in terms of the public water supply requirements. And there need to be sanitary facilities, and we've made it very clear.
Right.
From day one, from prior to the time that this proposal entered into the rezoning process, the zoning amendment process.
Right.
With the town board. That porta potties just were not considered by this board a viable solution for a facility that is permanent and that would be considered an asset in and within the town of Rhinebeck. Or credit to the applicant.
Okay, let's.
Is that basic?
I think it certainly sums up my feelings, I don't know, I've.
Let's go over the.
Can I just say, is that was a conversation that was had outside of this board?
That's right.
Right.
Because I'm just, I don't remember talking.
No, 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 it was a pre-submission field meeting that was requested by, by Mr. Rizzo and his planning consultant.
It was also discussions in terms of the town board doing the rezoning. Because the town board wanted to know if they rezone, does that automatically also permit the use?
I personally find it unlikely that any wedding party, all dressed up and everything, really wants to go use porta potty. I mean, they make some really nice porta potties out there, that you, it's like walking into a regular bathroom almost, but those are expensive. So yes, there are viable solutions for certain things for a lot of different events, but for a wedding event, you really got to knock it up a couple of notches and everything, and I don't know why you wouldn't think it would behoove this whole project to have nice, clean, presentable bathrooms anyway. Why would you even not consider it? I know the cost, obviously, but.
Well, like I said, the, okay, first, let me deal with Mr. Broad's questions, okay, or comments.
There's only questions, those, those were the, that was the consensus at the conclusion of the field visit. I'm simply reporting it.
Right, I understand.
To the board.
I got it.
And I think the, the board is, I think the question for the board is whether the board concurs with all or almost or none of that in terms of the information that the board needs to, or the reaction that the board needs to give you folks at what is now the sketch plan conference.
Right, but I'm going to tell you that the application was submitted, oh, I don't know, maybe a year ago or something like that?
Mr. Wheeler, the application could not have been submitted a year ago because a special event venue was not authorized under the zoning law of the town of Rhinebeck until two months ago.
Okay.
It didn't exist to apply for.
I'm sorry?
It did not exist to apply for.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the, the next thing is to resubmit, okay? I was under the impression that we had submitted, Mr. Broad, I was under the impression we had submitted and that that application was still viable. That's apparently my.
No, there has been, there has been no application for, for a special permit venue. There was, there was an application submitted at one point in time for a conference center that was not authorized within the district.
Okay.
And the board, this board so advised the applicant and the applicant's representative.
Right.
And that then ultimately led to the, to the rezoning amendment process with the town board.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. We'll resubmit, okay? We'll resubmit and we'll, we'll take care, and so there's, are we going to get a review, for example? I wasn't privy to any of the comments, for example, the letter, is there any, any written document or any follow-up meeting minutes or?
There were no, there were no comments because technically this is meeting number one.
Okay.
On the application for special permit, of special event venue.
Okay.
Application, meeting one being sketch plan conference with planning board.
Okay.
To, for the planning board to outline requirements.
And I think Art's given you five, other members of the planning board, I don't know, Richard, is there something else that you would add to that list? Or anyone else that would add to that list?
I just wanted to know about the water, public water requirement. So they have to pull public water, they can't use wells?
No, they can use their wells.
They use the wells.
But it becomes a public water system because they're serving the public in a commercial, like a restaurant.
Need test requirements.
Terminology, oh, so it's just a matter of testing the water.
Right, it's a higher standard, it's a higher standard for the public.
My, again, is that technically public, or it's called technically a community water system, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's technically considered a community water system.
Right, the cutoff is five, five taps, basically.
My other question there is, I mean, you, we casually, yes, I look at the overall system, but when it's doing the spike on the weekend, you have four households that are trying to also take showers and stuff. You don't think you'll be maxing out a system, you have flow rates?
As far as the water? You mean as far as the water?
No, thank you.
They've got, they've got 25, not really documented, but 25 gallons per minute.
Yes.
You know, but when you go to a public water supply, you look at a lot of different things. Drawdown, flows, protracted periods of time. For a residential well, there really isn't a standard. You can draw down for, really, the bank tells you what to do. Four hours, eight hours, 24 hours, that type of thing. But there, by New York state law, there is no standard. When you get to a public water supply, then you start talking about New York state standards, okay? With respect to quality and quantity. And five is the magic number.
What does that mean here, does this mean potentially treating?
It depends on what the water quality is.
Okay, depends on, depends on what comes out.
Right, depends, yeah, you can't really tell until you do it.
Like, I'm guessing the, you know, the hospital, if it didn't have its own, if it didn't have the village water, had its own wells, it would be a public water supply. Restaurants, you know, they're serving the public, they're inviting you in to drink their water. It has to have health department approval. It has to be tested regularly to make sure that it's, you know, up to standard so you're not killing people.
Okay, so we're going to proceed from the standpoint of the sketch plan, that this was a sketch plan or continues to be a sketch plan meeting. And we're going to go address the issue of septic and water supply, parking and. the issue of septic and water supply, parking and...
Well, site plan.
Okay.
Basically, the submission with site plan.
Site plan approval, okay.
And the submission of a full EAF Part One.
Right.
Because the EAF that was previously considered in the secret determination made by the town board.
Right.
Dealt only with the question of rezoning.
Right.
In a general sense. It didn't relate to the combination of rezoning and the authorization of the particular use at this, at this location.
Right. See, I was under the impression, in my own defense, okay? I was under the impression that the previous submittal of a year ago took care of those issues. I didn't realize that the zone, I mean, I realized that the zone had changed, but I thought it was, the zone changed and then there was the resubmittal, okay? And so I missed it by a couple of months or a year or whatever.
Just event you have of taking over for another party.
It's okay. It's not the first time.
What might be most helpful to you is just to have a continuation of the sketch plan meeting so you can come before with what you do come up with.
Yeah.
To see whether or not you are indeed...
But, but, and to that end, okay? The overflow parking, I think, was talked about when you were out there. And those are basically the fields where the knocked down, the abandoned...
Greenhouses were.
What are the colors?
Greenhouses.
Thank you. Greenhouses were, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, it's that first word, sounds like...
They're the places where that parking can occur with, without creating additional disturbance.
Right, this is overflow parking. The actual parking is right in here.
Right.
Okay? Okay? And then we have the tent, I mean, this is the existing syst, well, this, this stuff right here is not the exist, is the proposed, okay? But the barn, the, here's the barn, here's the frame house, here's a house right here, house right here, you know, that type of thing. Because they had two or three rentals on the property, am I correct, Dan?
Yes.
And so, you know, that's been going on for a protracted period of time.
We have a number of seventy-five out there, and based on that seventy-five attendees, we're going to design potentially bathrooms and septic and so on. What happens when you get a two-hundred-person wedding?
Seventy-five is the maximum number authorized under the zoning law.
Okay, so that's a zoning.
Yeah, that's the zoning law.
We basically shoot them.
Yes.
Gotcha. So a party across the street.
That's right.
That's the cutoff.
We basically shoot them, right.
One of the things that I noticed here around the barn.
Yes, sir.
There's been parking around the barn for years.
Yep.
It's not defined on this drawing, and I would suggest that you define it.
By around the barn, do you mean...
Whatever public parking is today.
Top barn or the lower one?
This barn here.
The lower barn.
This is the main building.
This one, the orange, oh, you don't have the color.
The three-story barn is the main place of doing business.
Yeah, the parking, the parking right here.
Parking only here.
Yeah, that's our tent, yeah, that's to be our tent area.
No, I think he's talking about down around the bottom where you can go into the basement of the barn?
But there really isn't any.
Oh, you mean it's blacktopped, okay?
Yeah, that's just more of a turnaround area.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
This is Mr. Rizzo.
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, the only formal parking right now is out here.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. What are we doing with the three greenhouses that are still on the plan?
Yeah, they're in abeyance.
Okay, because we might be looking at a water supply for those at some juncture as well.
Well, interestingly enough, we had the four houses, plus we had all the greenhouses utilizing the water. Took away, didn't we take away two of the, two of the, three? We took away three of the greenhouses. So in fact, there's a, you know, if you did, it's called a water balance. If you did a water balance, you actually have a, you know, going to the pot, positive, okay? Now admittedly, that doesn't take into account the seventy-five people sucking down water and sodas and whatever else they drink.
What about Don Pitcher's house, the one that he currently lives in? Does he have his own source of water or is he tapping it off yours?
He has his own well.
So he shares access but not water?
Access.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions for members of the board at this point? Do you have any other questions about what you need to do to...
No, that's fine. Oops, I spoke prematurely.
There's just a couple of things I wanted to add as I was listening to Dan. As you know, we started when we had the rezoning done, we hired Schuster and Associates, Mr. Dan Schuster, who's been working with us. He had a, you know, a family emergency, wasn't able to be here tonight. And based on the recommendations from the board, we hired Dan Wheeler as a certified engineer for the plans. I know the question came up a little while ago because Marie had done, Welch had done these, and we've been working with her for three years now on the program. So then we brought Dan in based on the recommendations. Dan, and you have met with Dan Schuster already, to try to, we were trying to cover all the things that were, and unfortunately, I did speak to him today and he couldn't be here tonight to, because he's been working on the whole application. So I'm actually a little confused. I thought it was all done.
And Jayden Dan has outlined the same requirements.
Right.
Right, and he did, and I just know that he got behind because of...
Yeah, that's why I'd ask you, because the discussion with Dan was that we're going to try to get the actual applications, hand carry them to the meeting. In other words, they wouldn't have...
I thought they were dropped off.
But that was the...
They were dropped off on the, they were dropped off on July 1st.
No, 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 the...
I'll check on that.
Because the old...
I'll check on that. We had, we had applications all filled out by Mr. Schuster. In fact, we still, I've got, whoops, I've got them right there, okay? The reason we didn't, you, I don't think we submitted them because I was under the...
Okay. So Dan followed through with what?
Oh, yeah, we've got them. I mean, it's going to take two seconds to submit them.
They need to be executed, et cetera.
Right, not a problem. Tomorrow, you know, you'll have them with bells on, okay?
You want to make sure, you want to make sure that those applications reflect the points that aren't raised, though.
Right.
In terms of water, sewage, parking.
Right. Yes, sir.
Anything else from anyone?
So we may not be... No, I did, I want to just clarify a couple of things about the property itself. The actual flower shop has been in existence for like over seventy years. And in that barn was a small, like little office up there. We just remodeled the whole place, kind of built the structure with the intention, you know, have any events there, as you've been seeing me for three years now or two years. And I know you had a question, Richard, about the porta potties, and it's, I've gone, I'm not a floral designer or anything like that. My wife does that, but I go on some and help her do the setup, and they do, they bring these things in because of the amount of people. And they do it in places like Montgomery Place and Grasmere and other structures around here. They bring in temporary facilities like that. So, yeah, to me, I also thought at first it seemed kind of odd. And we have nothing with, nothing against putting in a more permanent type of system. It's more of a real, a temporary to get us up and going because you do have that, you know, peak of people that come in, you know, on a Saturday afternoon. So that, that was the whole idea behind the temporary structure, you know, behind the building back here with a fence. So this is the main road, you wouldn't even see it from the main road. And now it's just a temporary deal.
Can something like that be done with a temporary permit?
I don't believe we have the capacity to give a temporary permit like that. If they wanted to do a non-commercial event, they would get a permit from the zoning enforcement officer to put up a tent or whatever.
So the zoning person can't issue that?
Not for commercial use, no. I mean, basically, in order to do what they want to do commercially, they have to get the special use permit, and that doesn't permit, no pun intended, a temporary facility like that. It has to be the proper facility. The same thing we had with Astor Court. They had to make sure they had the proper facilities inside the house, and one of the requirements there was that they pump out that tank before every use, because they weren't sure where...
Right, they didn't have a whole set, they just had a big, a big golden tank. They didn't have a whole set.
Right, right. And then if there's a pump out, the same thing could be done here.
I think earlier in the discussion, we were talking about permanent versus temporary, and yes, everything was intended to be a permanent use in the barn, as you've seen in the facility. The tent structure was put on here just as a temporary for a weather issue.
That's fine.
So that's, that's the only thing that was temporary.
That's an element of the overall plan. It simply comes and goes as needed.
I just wanted, because, you know, it's been a short time trying to get Dan up to speed. You know, you're doing a great job, though, I'm sorry. And, I don't know.
The only thing that would be determined about that tent in terms of the site plan is the maximum size of the location, maximum size, and basically the setback from the, you know, minimum setback from the roadway, and that'll be pinned down on the, on the site plan.
And also, I know, when we, when we purchased the property, we had to have, you know, for the finance, we had to have everything tested. You know, the ground, the water, where there were tanks, and so all that was done, certified by the state, and we had, you know, all the land testing done. So those kind of things, you know, been, you know, all documented very well since we bought the property in 2009. So I just wanted to tell everybody that.
Okay, just, I'm sorry to beat it to death, but, whoops, I'm sorry to beat it to death, but just so I have it here. Okay, tent sizing and setbacks, sewage, water and parking. How am I doing?
I believe those are the four biggies.
Okay, Art?
Yeah, those are the, those are the big ones.
Okay.
You know, you know, the normal, you know, Dan, as you're aware, the normal site plan elements.
Right.
Lighting, exterior lighting, of course, is always a feature.
Landscaping.
And unless you're going to deal with a, deal with it as a separate permit, instead of as part of the site plan process, if you're intending to have a different signage, signage could be included on the site plan.
Also landscaping.
You have sign permits. We already got signs.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you were going to change it in any way, you might as well just integrate it, you know?
Right, no, 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 that was fine. Okay.
You know, the overflow parking, to the extent that you're going to provide any, any surface treatment. I know in the, in the field, there was some discussion about some improvement of a portion of the access road, right?
Right.
Wherever that...
Put some additional gravel down.
Surface treatment's going to, going to be applied, that, you know, that needs to be, needs to be shown.
Just, just to officially beat the horse to death, so porta potties are out, right?
Out.
They're really nice. I've seen some nice ones.
Okay, well, I think, I think we have concluded it from both sides here, so the horse is officially dead, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Is that me? Okay, our last item, unless Jonathan would like to wait till next month. I'm just kidding, just kidding. Okay. Jonathan Mensch, Mensch Grasmere LLC, Mill Road and New York State Route Nine South. Special use permit, wetlands permit and site plan approval. Continuation from March 4th, 2013 of sketch plan conference concerning proposed Grasmere Farm Hotel in the rural agricultural RA-10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark Districts and the town's, excuse me, the town's local waterfront with vitalization area. Presentation of application for special use permit pursuant to town code chapter 125 zoning, sections 12520 and 12568 double M, for the proposed Country Inn Two and related applications for wetlands permit and site plan approval, all is accompanied by preliminary master development, site plan narrative and full AAF and other supporting data to permit planning board to consider initiation of seeker compliance process through classification of the project as a type one action and declares can intend to serve as lead agency for coordinated environmental quality review.
That's the, the key, or is the last few phrases of that particular introduction. Purpose this evening is to hear again an overview of the project, hear an overview of the various submissions that the applicant has made, and all be of the understanding that we're not deeming, not in the position this evening of deeming any application complete, but simply prospectively reaching the point of agreeing that the submission is well enough developed and that there is, there are one or more applications to the planning board on the table that would allow the planning board to declare its intent to serve as lead agency for this project, identify the other involved agencies and authorize a notice of intent to be circulated for, for a thirty-day period. That's the, that's the, that's the position this evening.
And then the hope is that at our August meeting, we will be indeed confirmed as lead agency and then...
Go from there.
Go from there.
Well, I'm Jonathan Mensch. I am the applicant and along with my father.
I think you're on, you're on.
Am I on? Okay, the owner of the property. And the site plan that we're going to show you is significantly similar to what we showed a couple of months back when we were here for the sketch plan review. But I'll give you a quick, a quick overview. There's one change that was made that I'm going to have Robert talk about. It shouldn't, it doesn't change it in a big picture sense, but it is a consolidation of buildings into a single building. We also, since we were here last, have done a significant number of the third-party studies, the archaeological, the traffic, the environmental studies, the habitat, tree survey. Those have all been submitted as part of the application, and John's going to talk about that a little bit, as, along with our, our hope that we can submit this as a special use permit with the actual final site plan application to follow. But to give a quick overview of the property, this is Reinbeck Village right here. This is the Amtrak station, and this is the Grasmere property. It's about 525 acres. It's flanked on one side by Mill Road and on the other side by Route Nine. The area that we're looking to utilize for the project is the existing estate grounds of the property, which are located on about forty acres. They sit right here on the top of the property, closest to Route Nine. The manor house, I know nobody can really see this, but in the context of the property, the manor house sits right here and the existing stone barns sit right here. This area out here is, is an open field, and this is what we've returned to, to farming use in the last couple of years, and the intention is to continue this as an act of agricultural operation. To provide a quick overview on the different components, well, to start with, there's three different entrances to the property. From a volume standpoint, the primary entrance is actually this one down here, which is, which is an existing old estate and farm drive, which exits, which enters under Route Nine down here, which is right before, well, sort of halfway between this and Wheeler Road, for people to know where Wheeler is, down here, down south on Route Nine. But this is a pretty neat drive. You enter off of Route Nine here, and there's a, a nice drive through, through a wooded area, and then there start to become these great views that open up over the hayfields to your left. It really becomes apparent right here, the extent of some of the land. There's then a drive that goes near these water features, and the really neat part about it is, as you make this turn right here, the stone barns come into view. And for people that haven't been on the property before, it's sort of an unexpected view because you don't imagine that you're going to see something like that standing there. you don't imagine that you're going to see something like that standing there. It's really neat. And this, these stone barns are the site for the restaurant, and what we're creating is an event barn, which would be in addition to the barns complex where weddings would be held or corporate events. And this is all of the restaurant traffic, including any deliveries that would be made, and all the event traffic. So all of this would exit and enter directly off of this lower Route 9 entrance. The second entry point is here, also off of Route 9, and this is all of the employees and any deliveries that are being made for the hotel. So employees would enter here. There's a parking area that's screened from Route 9, but it's very close. So employees would park here and then be taken by, either walk or be taken by golf cart down to the main hotel area. This would also serve as the valet area for the hotel. One of the intentions that, or one of the things we've been working on is, are ways to minimize any traffic on the old estate grounds themselves. The intention is that cars obviously need to enter, but they then go away, and they stay away for the duration of the guest stay. So the experience for guests is very similar to what it is right now. It's a walking, it's a walking environment. The third entrance is the existing estate drive off of Mill Road, and this is the drive that most people that have come to the property have experienced. It's lined with the locust trees that Janet Livingston planted back to honor General Richard Montgomery when he died in the Revolutionary War. So it's really the main historic drive, and we wanted to keep this available, but only for hotel guests, in order to minimize the use of Mill Road and to keep all the heavier traffic off of Route 9 directly. Robert can talk a little bit about the site plan, along with the modification, but the three main components of it are the area that I spoke about, which is the barns, and the barns would also have a relationship with the fields. The idea is to create produce here, which is then served to diners in the restaurant, as well as, there's a permanent, ongoing farmer's market that would be created in the existing Carriage House building, and that would sell produce that's created on-site. The second piece are the eco cabins that flank the ponds. Those are the small cabins that are placed on piers, designed to be sort of built and maintained in a very environmentally friendly way. The third part is the main hotel and spa, which is an adaptive reuse of the Grasmer building and some wings. But Robert can talk about that a little more, as well as this area up in here, which is the slight change from the earlier site plan.
Good evening.
All right.
This is just a zoom-in on the project area, so just to take it from a hotel guest's perspective, the driveway leading off of Mill Road comes around here. This is the manor house, and these are the stone barns to orient you, so those are the existing structures. The manor house, the residential piece of the estate, forms the center of the hotel. This is where guests arrive, and this is the kind of central activity of the hotel. There are two wings coming off the manor house, a west wing and an east wing. The west wing has some rooms here, and the spa going down here. The east wing is a series of rooms, and I will, I'll show you a slightly zoomed-in plan of these in a moment. More rooms in the eco cabins around the ponds here. So just numbers, there are 12 lodging units in the manor house itself, 27 further lodging units in the wings, 45 lodging units in the eco cabins, and then the new component, which John mentioned, is this piece up here. Previously, we used to have more cabins up here, more of the eco cabins, but they didn't, when we looked at it as a design, they didn't seem to make much sense. They didn't have the ponds to look, to organize them and to look over, and it seemed a bit more like litter on the site. So we consolidated them into a single building. This is 24 lodging units, and it's oriented around its own particular little courtyard, and it's, we're, it's sort of taken in inspiration as a coach house or a carriage house, which is typically the kind of structure you would experience on entering one of these old properties, these old estate properties. Okay, to zoom in. So this is a zoomed-in plan of the manor house and its wings. Again, the manor house, 12 rooms, then two-story stack of rooms here, and then the spa right here. And these buildings, and the same over here, the buildings are broken down into small buildings which are linked with glass corridors. So the idea is, we didn't want to build a wall that obstructs the landscape. We wanted to let the landscape really flow in through the buildings. There's a little massing study up here, so you see how the buildings are kind of separate buildings, and as you pass between them, you almost feel like you're going outside and you're full in a sort of very glazed corridor. So that's the manor. We also have the intention to hopefully reinstate an old formal garden that was there, and then there's an outdoor pool right on the cusp of the slope overlooking the farm. Next component, so then the eco cabins. There are a couple of drawings here. There's a plan and a cross-section and a couple of elevations here, and each eco cabin is a single bedroom. It's a suite, and this is the sort of most important drawing or diagram in regards to these. The reason we're calling them eco cabins is because we're going to prefabricate them off-site, and the only onsite construction is going to be the pilings. And then, so the prefabricated structures will be brought in and placed on top of these pilings, but they will be above the ground level. They will sort of hover above the ground plane so that runoff and drainage won't be disturbed, and the sort of natural ground cover and all of that will flow through under the building as much as is possible. And then again, to use recycled reclaimed materials and high-energy, you know, modern green construction methods, so that really they emphasize the fact that they're in nature and they're in harmony with nature, and they're intended to be as ecologically sensitive as possible. And then the coach house here is a zoomed-in plan. It's, as I said, a kind of U-shape around its own little courtyard, and there's a sort of sketch of how we imagine it here. It's a very simple building, again, using recycled materials and echoing the kind of barn vernacular of the Hudson Valley with a more contemporary kind of finish on it, but, you know, the intention is it sits back in the woods away from the driveway and forms its own little hub here. And then this is just a zoomed-in plan of the stone barns. So the large stone barn will be the restaurant. The lower level will be the kitchen. Over here, there's a smaller stone barn, which will have a retail component showcasing the farm produce, as John mentioned. Also then, an entry down to the event pavilion, which is built down and pushed against the slope on a retaining wall here, to kind of take it out of the view as much as possible. And so these kind of three buildings form the sort of public component of the resort. The kitchen below here will also be able to service events in the event pavilion here. I think that's it. I'll hand over to John Montane, our engineer.
Thanks, Robert. Are there any questions on the design that you would like to entertain right now, before I go into any other studies that we've done?
The event building is backed into the wall, into the ground, on two sides or three sides?
On the long side.
Along the north side, there's a retain, this is a slope coming down from the lawn above, and it's, there's a retaining wall along this face of the building. And in fact, the rest of the building, we're going to put on piers and lift it up off the ground in order to be as sensitive as possible to the kind of nearby wetlands and the runoff going into those. So it's a single retaining wall right there.
And is that building, you said it's the event building, so is it noise-contained?
Yeah, very much so.
Actually, the benefit of the topography here is that it does do that. The whole building and the back wall, if you imagine the fields...
I'm on the south side, so I will hear it if there's noise.
Okay. Well, the building itself, though, faces out towards the fields, and that's where that, the intent for that. As Jonathan said earlier, our intent tonight is to try to get the seeker process started here. We would like the board to be the lead agency and do coordinated review from that perspective. The application that we have before you to trigger that is a special use permit, understanding that most applications that come to this board are a combination of special use permit and site plan application together. We are looking to start this process just with the special use permit. And the purpose for that is, is that this is a fairly large project, there's a lot of complexity to it. We want to work through the beginnings of the site plan approval process. By starting with special use permit, working through the seeker process, once Jonathan, as the applicant, has a good feeling from the board on exactly what direction to go, that's when additional studies and environmental engineering investigations, grading plans, detailed stormwater management investigations would be advanced. Part of that is just really financial management on Jonathan's part, make sure that we're not spending money on studies that ultimately would have to either be redone or don't make a lot of sense in some future design. So having said that, the application that we put together and we brought to the board includes a number of the studies that we had previously discussed as preliminary investigations to get you started. There's a fully environmental, a full environmental assessment form that's been included in as a draft to start that. We did complete a traffic study based on this master plan. So the uses that are here, the density, the occupancies, the hours of operation were used for that traffic study. We hired Bagnon Environmental to do both wetlands investigation and threaten an endangered species analysis. There's an executive summary of his study that we've included in here. Birchwood Archaeological did a full environmental archaeological investigation, both Phase 1A and 1B, including shovel tests of the entire 40-acre development zone that we're looking at. That we've included for your reference also. Bagnon Environmental also did our tree survey for us. So we did a tree survey. We wanted the tree survey more than anything so that we were very sensitive in how we located our eco cabins. Again, all part of the theme that we're trying to market here for this site, adaptive reuse and then environmental conscientious design, and then introducing the farming activity into our event space and our commercial activity. I think that's about all that we really have to present tonight. If there's any other questions you would have...
I guess what I would, my own thing, we certainly have enough here, I think, to start circulation for lead agency. But until we have, you know, the things like that, we certainly can't circulate to other review agencies, even to our consultants, because they don't really have anything to review. They have a narrative, but they'll obviously more to actually review, just so you understand how that's going to work. We can sort of work with you, get a feeling for what we have here, what we know, but something might come up in an engineering review or something like that that none of us anticipate, that would certainly have an impact on, let's say, the seeker process.
Correct.
So we would not be in a position to go, you know, complete seeker until we're actually in a position to have the applications to circulate to the different consultants for review.
And we're fully aware of that.
Okay.
Actually, one of the things we were going to ask, as you had in a previous application, is we would like the ability to meet with the review engineer as soon as possible.
And that's fine, as long as, as I told the other applicant, you realize you have to pay for their time.
It's all part of the escrow. Yeah, yeah. And John's okay with that.
It would basically be through an escrow agreement, you know.
Jonathan, do you have anything else that you wanted to add tonight?
Yeah, I think, well, what I'd want to add is that while we haven't done the full engineering work associated with some of the details of this, we have spent a significant amount of time coming up with a site plan that, I mean, this is the result of many iterations of efforts that we've made sort of over the last several years, and I felt that it was important to give the planning board a plan that was very close to where we think the final plan would go. I think we can continue to make improvements, you know, as we're going through this process, and I like to think that we can sort of have some other good ideas along the way and make this better. But the fundamental sort of components of this, I think, are pretty well-fixed at this point. We can play around with them, but it's, sort of what you see is where we would want to go with it.
We can go so far with that in the review process, but to really do the full review, we're going to need all that other detailed material. I understand what you want. You want a feeling from us, a consensus, some sort of sense of, do we like the overall plan? Do we like where it's going? Do we like the basic feel? And I understand all that. I feel, personally, that's something we can do, as long as you realize that's by no means in a preapproval or anything like that. It's just basically a sense of the board, but it's by no means commits the board...
Oh, exactly. No, what we're asking for is really the completion of the special use permit review. We're not asking for a final site plan, and we understand that in order to get final approval, we're going to need to come back for final site plan review. That's completely understood. What we would like to do, if it's possible, is to get the special use permit, which is going to allow me to then go out and sort of solidify some relationships with some financial partners, which will then allow for the additional studies that need to get done in order to get the final site plan review.
Well, the one thing we'd have to look into is legally, I don't know if we can issue a special use permit without site plan.
Yeah.
Because the zoning law, I think, requires site plan for every special use permit. They go hand in hand. I don't, legally, I don't think we can do that.
There can be, there can be a consensus with respect to the probability, the high probability of a special permit being issued, but the special permit under the zoning law cannot be issued except in the presence of an approved site plan. But that's a down-the-road detail.
Sure, okay, bye.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So what, I have prepared for the board this evening a procedural resolution, and frankly, if Michael doesn't mind, I don't see any reason why you fellows can't sit down.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, please do.
I'd be happy to.
No need to stand.
The procedural resolution is based, based around what I said at the beginning of this particular item, but the purpose this evening is to allow the planning board to initiate the seeker review process upon the board's recognition that there's an adequate amount of information on the table to do that. And in terms of the adequate amount of information, the first thing that has to be on the table is one or more applications to the planning board. There is an application that has been submitted for a special permit. Frankly, the application, there have been applications also submitted for wetlands permit and site plan approval, but it's clearly indicated that both applications are absent some of the supporting information that's required for those, but there is an application for special use permit, and there's certainly information here that supports that application for special use permit. So I think the test of the board having an application on the table is clearly met. Secondly, the board, if it desires to proceed as secret lead agency, needs to recognize, and I think it would be appropriate for the board to recognize, that the planning board, in this particular case, has the broadest jurisdiction and the broadest scope of responsibility with respect to this particular project. You are dealing with the special permit, you're dealing with the overall site plan, you may be dealing with a subdivision plat that might be necessary for this. There are various other agencies that are involved, but each have a piece of the project, the DOT access permit, the health front water supply situation, or the sanitary situation. But you are the agency that has the overview. So you have the broadest jurisdiction, therefore, I think you're legitimately in a position to want to be the lead agency. That being the case, then you need to classify the action. Clearly, this is a Type 1 action under seeker. Not only is it an historic district, but the magnitude of the project makes it a Type 1 action. Beyond that, you then have to identify the other agencies that are involved, either involved agencies with permitting, approving, or funding jurisdiction with respect to this project, or those who are, have an interest in all with respect to this particular project. In preparing a resolution for you, I've looked at the involved agencies from two perspectives. Those that we know are absolutely involved, plus those that we know may be potentially involved. And the potential involved, involved agencies here really are three in number. I probably, if three, they're three in number. One is, the matter has not been totally decided yet as to whether this development will be served by its own water supply, or whether there's going to be an arrangement of some sort with the village for municipal water. Consequently, identified as a prospective involved agency is the mayor and the village board of trustees. If that be the case, that there is an extension of the municipal supply, then the New York State Department of Health Bureau of Water Supply would be involved. Otherwise, they would not be. And furthermore, while at this point in time, we have, we believe, an applicant who is submitting a quote "variance-free" or waiver-free plan, there always is that possibility of something coming up that's going to require some consideration by the zoning board of appeals. Therefore, the zoning board of appeals is also identified as a prospective involved agency. Doing it upfront simply eliminates the possibility of going through a new process six months down the road, a year down the road, or whatever. That really is, oh, and the other, only other aspect is that with respect to the extent of review by the board's consultants, there is an opportunity for the board to, for the board's consultants to review at this point in time, and a need to review, but to recognize that that review is not occurring with respect to site plan details, but should be occurring, I would say, by myself, Planters East, Morris Associates, and the CAB, with respect to immediate identification of, and it's in the resolution, immediate identification of any additional information that should be provided, so that the extent of potential environmental issues that have already been identified by the applicant can be explored, and such matters as the consistency, the general consistency of this project with matters such as coastal policy set forth in the LWRP. And that's all built into the resolution. So it's not technical review, it's not some bolt review by either from a planning perspective or an engineering perspective, but looking at those broad environmental issues that need to be addressed in addition to, or as extensions of, the volume of work that's already been prepared in terms of the traffic studies, the archaeological studies, the ecological investigations. So that's what the resolution sets forth. I accompanied the draft resolution with a notice of intent that's already prepared for the attention, if the board acts, for the attention of Joan and the applicant, and in that notice of intent, there is identified a fairly extensive list of the, from among the submitted materials that would be provided to each of the involved agencies, such that everyone is brought on board informationally right up front on this project. And the notice of intent includes not only a request for concurrence as to lead agency, but also a request if the, for comments, if any of those agencies wish to provide initial comments to this board, to guide the board in its deliberations.
It's also an initial acknowledgement that we are not circulating the whole application for their review, so that they understand that there's a whole lot more to come, so there's no confusion.
But they are provided, they are being provided, the...
Right, what we have today.
The master development plan, they're providing the narrative and the full AAF.
Right.
The traffic study, because it's important to a lot of agencies, the ecological and the archaeological. Only, the only other comment I would have, the resolution also calls, and when the calls for, and I propose that when a package is put together for circulation, there is a redaction of a portion of the submission that has been made, the Part 2 EAF.
Right.
It is not the applicant's responsibility, it is the responsibility of the board, therefore, Pages 11... Therefore, pages 11 through 21, or whatever, should be removed from that document, should be considered removed from the document. And that is specific to the resolution.
Right, yeah, I saw that, too. Very nicely done, but we have to do it. So. Absolutely, I'm sure you'd feel that way, absolutely.
But anyway, the resolution is on pages 7, 8, and like I said, the NOI is attached. I'm wholeheartedly recommend that the board proceed the...
Well, shall I read the resolution and see what we think?
Yes, the submission is certainly adequate for the purpose, and there are no glaring inconsistencies in the package or anything of that sort.
Okay, well, let's see where we go with this. Okay. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows in the matter of a proposed action by Mench Grasmer LLC applicant involving development of the Grasmer Farm Hotel within a 250-acre set aside of a 525-acre property on Mill Road and New York State Route 9 G South, Route 9, in the rural agricultural RA 10 and Hudson River National Historic Landmark districts in the town's local waterfront revitalization area. One acknowledges the applicant's submission of July 1, 2013, of an application to the planning board for special use permit pursuant to Town Code, Chapter 125 Zoning, Sections 12520 and 12568-M, the proposed country into related applications to the planning board for wetlands permit and site plan approval, and supporting data, including a four-sheet set of master development plan drawings prepared by Robert Donley and GPI Inc. dated July 1, 2013, and both a narrative and full EAF certified by Jonathan Mench on June 27, 2013, and a coastal assessment form completed by GPI Inc. on June 27, 2013. With respect to the full EAF, the planning board redacts from the record the completed EAF Part II submitted by the applicant, with it noted completion of EF Part II pursuant to the exclusive purview of the secret lead agency. Two, acknowledges proposed action involves both these applications to the planning board, as well as both any others that may be required from the planning board, including the expectation subdivision plat approval will be necessary, and those other permits, approvals, and compliance determinations required from other town, county, state, and federal agencies. Three, classifies proposed action as a type-one action under seeker, for which coordinated environmental quality review is required. Four, identifies the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Central and Region 3 offices, the New York State Department of Transportation, Region 8 office, the New York State Department of Health Bureau of Water Supply, the Dutchess County Health Department, Environmental Health Division, the Village of Rhinebeck, Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals, the Town of Rhinebeck Highway Superintendent, and the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Administrator, as other confirmed or potential involved agencies with respect to proposed action, and among others identifies the US Department of the Army Corps of Engineers, New York District, the New York State Office for Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation Field Office Bureau, the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets, the New York State Department of State Coastal Management Program, the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board, the Town of Rhinebeck Building Department, and the supervisor of the Town of Rhinebeck as interested agencies. Five, from among the involved agencies, deems the town planning board to have the broadest jurisdiction and scope of responsibility and review and approval of the proposed action, and thus deems it appropriate for the planning board to declare its intent to serve as secret lead agency for coordinated environmental quality review. Six, in consideration of the above, and wither clearly to be included in the clerk's minutes of this meeting, the expressed understanding by the applicant that the application submitted to the planning board for special use permit, wetlands permit, and site plan approval on July 1, 2013, are not considered complete, but are simply being employed as triggers allowing the planning board to issue the annexed notice of intent to serve as lead agency under seeker, authorizes the planning board clerk with the assistance of the planning consultant to issue said notice of intent. Seven, returns this matter to the planning board's agenda of August 19, 2013, for discussion of the applications and furtherance of the seeker process, beginning with declaration of secret lead agency status provided. Thirty calendar days have elapsed since circulation of the notice of intent, and no dissent to the planning board's assumption of the role is expressed by the other involved agencies. Eight, requests review in the interim by its lead consultants, naming Planners East, Morris Associates, and the town's Conservation Advisory Board of the applicant's submission of July 1, 2013, and any additional information that may be provided, as to the extent potential environmental issues have been identified by the applicant, assessment of the extent to which the potential environmental issues have been addressed, and the extent of additional information that should be provided, should the public review of the applications within the purview of the planning board, when the, when the public review of the applications within the purview of the process commence, and the consistency of the proposal with coastal policies is set forth within the town's LWRP. Could I hear a motion to approve? A second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Very good. So we'll get the seeker process started. You are certainly authorized to talk with the town's consultants, Morris, ARC, the Anyone else you think of that you might want to talk to? And, you know, see how we can move along with this. Any questions for us about...
No, once the, I was going to say, once the meeting is adjourned, let's have a minute conference here about distribution, copies and distribution. Joan.
Okay. Once the camera's off. That's all I had on the agenda. I know someone said 8:15. It's not all that bad. It's seven of nine.
Ramapho was the item.
Yeah, Ramapho did drag us out. Anyone else have anything else that you wish to bring up? Hearing none. Woody?
A motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We stand adjourned at 8:... What the heck is that, 53?
53, 55, something.
All right.